Good morning, we're rolling, I think. Good morning. So I wanted to start and introduce you to the Provost first, who will speak first, then I'll say a few words and then we'll move on with our day. So Provost.
Well, thank you, Claudia, and good morning, everyone, and welcome to this town hall meeting. And this year, we're in 2020, is historically significant as the year of COVID, of course, but it's also the year when Black Lives Matter became a global movement. And a year when we have seen protests across the world and demands that we reckon with the history of colonialism and with the racism that continues to disfigure our societies. This reckoning must be comprehensive across politics, education, history and commemoration. Universities must look again at our curriculum and how we arrived at them and at the topics of our research and scholarship. We must look at how we recruit staff and enroll students and how we commemorate and celebrate our past and our graduates. Racism is a structural problem and no institution, including our own, can assume it is immune. We must be alert to discrimination and bias, including unconscious bias and microaggressions. And this is not a simple matter. By its nature, unconscious bias is something we are unaware of. This is a process and it starts with listening. At this town hall meeting, we do have a few announcements to make. The university's first Associate Vice Provost for Equality, Diversity and Inclusion, Professor Claudia Brooke, will be speaking after me and she will fill you in on the new Equality Office just launched and the new Black Studies Module that the college is planning. And we're very excited to tell you about these. But the main purpose of this event is not to inform, but to open a discussion across our community on race and ethnicity, which means that we need to hear from you. We need to create a space where you are heard and we can all work towards our shared mission of making Trinity a place that is welcoming and inclusive for all. Now is the right time to be having this discussion because the Higher Education Authority Survey on Race Equality in Irish Higher Education is due to be launched in the coming weeks and it will support increased work nationally in this area. This town hall meeting is part of a wider discussion across Irish universities and colleges and it's vital that we get this right as a sector and as a country. Of course, equality and inclusivity isn't a new mission for Trinity, it's something we've long aspired to. It was an important strand of our last strategic plan and our current plan, launched in March, commits us to, and I quote, "foster an ever more diverse and inclusive student community", that's in Goal One. In Goal Eight, we say we will be one Trinity community and it places equality, diversity and inclusion at the centre of the university's ambitions for the next five years. And puts it there because of the strengths that it will give to the quality of our education and research in our core mission. And it commits us to embed these into all aspects of Trinity life. We're serious about delivering these goals. With the events of this year, the killings of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd, the toppling of the statue of the slave trader Edward Colston in Bristol after years of petitioning the local councils to remove it, and the xenophobia that Chinese and Asian minorities faced in many countries at the start of the pandemic. What these events have brought home is the presence of systemic and structural racism in our societies and the barriers to overcoming it. We can't fool ourselves that these barriers are easily dismantled or that setting worthy aspirations is enough. We need to listen, we need to think and we need to act. We know from our efforts to bring about gender equality what this takes. Sexism is another deep-rooted and systemic problem. Our actions in this sphere include adopting the Athena Swan Charter as a proven framework to improve gender equality across the university. And last year, we welcomed the government's Senior Academic Leadership Initiative, SALI, to accelerate gender balance in senior positions in Irish higher education institutions. Our relative success with gender equality should give us hope. But as I say, it starts with listening. Only by really hearing the experiences and points of view of people directly affected can we be serious about bringing about change and addressing discrimination. I'm very glad we're at this point. I thank everyone who has contributed to bringing us here. I thank our guest speaker, Professor Rowena Arshad from Edinburgh University, who is delivering the keynote. And I thank all of you for attending and for your belief that we are one Trinity community and your readiness to do all we can to honour this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Provost. Those are words that are incredibly important and very important for us all to hear. I'm very grateful for those words. Welcome to you all. I'm going to say a few words to you now. And to those who don't know me, I'm the Associate Vice Provost for Equality, Diversity and Inclusion and I lead the new EDI unit in Trinity. I'm delighted that we have a great turnout to this event this morning and that we've had such interest in this event. To me, the signals that we are ready to make change, that we're willing to learn, we're engaged, frustrated perhaps, it signals maybe that we have stories to tell of lived experience which may not always be comfortable to tell or to hear. Or maybe we're here because we want to be allies or better allies. After weeks of lockdown, which have been hard, I think, on us all, it is good for us to get together as a community, even in virtual space, and talk about something which affects this community and on which we need to act. Now, what I found heartening in the run-up to this town hall is the willingness that I have seen across college to tackle racism and to try and make sure that students and colleagues feel included in our community. While I know this journey towards an open discussion of race and ethnicity in Trinity is in its early stages still, finding that there is a will to do something across this college is a very good place to be. We all need a bit of optimism, so before I reach a however, I wanted to share some examples of projects and events that have been launched in the last six months in this community that are centred on race and ethnicity. So the Global Room and Counselling Service, they've been cooperating together to launch a project called International Chats for our international students and all our students who identify with multicultural backgrounds. This aims especially to help you adjust, to support your academic success and your personal growth. The Students' Union recently ran a refugee week spearheaded by the President and the Ethnic Minorities Officer to shine a light on our diverse student population and the potential challenges they face, urging others to be compassionate. The Graduate Students' Union have put in place a new EDI officer this year and will push for strong policies and sanctions around every student's right to participate fully in the life of our college without fear of prejudice, abuse or attack based on their ethnicity, race, sexuality or the other grounds identified under our equality legislation. They are supporting national campaigns to introduce law on hate crime in Ireland. Then there is the work on our curriculum, which the Provost mentioned, both the new Black Studies elective, which will kick off next Michaeline's term, which students in Trinity successfully lobbied for, and the work on the inclusive curriculum, which is kicking off now. The inclusive curriculum will look at how we construct learning and teaching and how this is done from a position of power, often Eurocentric, often therefore missing valuable learnings from beyond Ireland or beyond Europe. In the Faculty of Health Sciences, I know you're addressing racism on placements, among other things. This summer too, unconscious bias training for all committees in the college was entered into Trinity statutes and will be rolled out this year. In our office, we have just hired a new EDI data officer. She'll be able to support the analysis of ethnicity here in Trinity, so we can begin to understand where to target actions. So these are just some of the things we're doing. If you're doing things you want to know about or you want us to know about, please contact us in the EDIunitonequality@tcd.ie. So we have lots of ideas in Trinity, in other words, and we're getting to work. And I know that many of the people involved in this rather tentacular change today are here and I thank you for your work and your creative thinking. However, and I did say there was a however, we're also fantastically good in Trinity of being fragmented and not joining the dots between the excellent work done across campus. There is a danger that these actions burn out after a little while or get forgotten. There's also a very real danger that we don't quite have the courage to face some of the challenging issues. There's a danger, in other words, that we do a lot, but that we still do not get to the bottom of systemic racism, which we face. In other words, if Trinity is going to be successful and really welcoming and including all of us in our community, we're going to need the courage to be uncomfortable and to open these debates. So I wanted us to come together today so that we can learn from expert experience elsewhere, hence our first speaker, and listen to lived experience in Trinity. I want to gather views here too, so that I can go to board with a concrete plan to tackle systemic racism in Trinity. We've made startling progress in the last 10 years on gender with the Times Higher Ranking Trinity third in the world and gender-based leadership across, gender equal leadership across board, council and DOG. I think we need to see similar kinds of progress on race and ethnicity. To get there, we'll need to put in place a thing that is robust and that won't be forgotten or swept under the carpet again. And so with those words, I want to introduce our first speaker. And we have Emeritus Professor Rowena Arshad. She is Chair in Multicultural and Anti-Racist Education and Associate of the Gender Centre for Education and Racial Equality in Scotland and RACD. I'm delighted that she can join us today. She'll speak for 30 minutes, after which you'll have a chance to ask her questions. Please send us questions and comments through the Q&amp;A button for the panelists. In the second half of the event, then, we'll be opening up the floor to the college community. But I now give you Rowena Arshad.
Thank you very much and good morning to all of you. And thank you to the Provost and also Claudia for your introductions and your words. I have to say to you that, you know, a lot of the issues and the concerns and also enthusiasm that you have are mirrored in Edinburgh. We also are a large institution like yourself. We have a devolved structure. Trying to ensure local relevance and keeping an eye at consistency at the kind of university level can be quite difficult. We, so joining dots is an issue for us, so when you crack that one, could one of you come and do the keynote for us in terms of how to join dots? Because we have a similar issue. In terms of the George Floyd and all that happened over summer, I think that's absolutely right, that people have been trying to get their, their kind of heads around what this means in practice for us in terms of learning, teaching, research and scholarship. But it also in terms of our personal thoughts on it and our own feelings about the issues, because we are on a spectrum of, you know, for those of us, some of it will be absolutely lived experience, some of it will be an area that we are worried about in terms of getting it wrong, particularly in terms of terminology and perhaps being seen to be racist. These are all thoughts that float around our heads and are common, I think, regardless of where we are. So I'm going to try and start sharing my screen, so you bear with me. Can everybody see this? Yep, okay, people nodding, good. So our work was informed, I mean, as the Provost has said, you know, our universities haven't started from scratch. We have been doing things in the past. But it would be fair to say that our attention has been on Athena Swan and gender in terms of EDI work and a little bit on disability, supporting students particularly, not even staff. And so last year, Senate commissioned a thematic review of student support for Black Minority Ethnic Students, which I chaired. And I hope the PowerPoint can be shared with all of you who are present today because these are, I've put hyperlinks to them, so you can actually click in it and look at the thematic review. And the thematic review came up with all sorts of things, which I'll talk about a bit later. But it helped to shape, I think, the Race Equality and Anti-Racist Action Plan that we currently have. We have been monitoring EDI data for well over a decade. But what threw up from the thematic review is that our heads of schools didn't know about this data. So we are very good at collecting the data, we're less good about sharing it and making, and looking at what we should be doing with aspects of the data. So in the Equality, Diversity Monitoring and Research Committee, we call it EDMARK reports, there is a whole section on ethnicity which points out issues of underrepresentation, et cetera. So I think data is really, really important. It's key because that is where we start measuring progress. And also it throws up good examples where, you know, that isn't an issue. So there are one or two schools where there isn't an attainment gap. It's quite obvious. So we can go to them and say, well, what's happening in your school that's managing to achieve this? Whilst in another school, there might be a 19% gap. And that gap has really worried the heads of schools because they hadn't realised this was happening. So data is key. Of course, we had student and staff petitions following the murder of George Floyd. And that, our students went public on it. They used change.org and they had over 10,000 signatures. And I guess it has catapulted us to a wake-up zone on that one because when things go so public, there is of course a reputational issue as well. And staff petitions followed. So that work has, so our work has been informed by the demands from those petitions as well. And of course, in the GB, we have the Equality and Human Rights Commission Report, which looked at tackling racial harassment, similar to, I think, the report that you're getting forthcoming in the next few weeks. So our work's been informed by these areas. What the thematic review showed was actually there was an awareness gap and low racial literacy levels within staff within the university. So people said things like, well, no one has complained. We don't have a problem. That's an awareness gap. Whereas on the lived reality on the day-to-day, there were loads of examples of microaggressions coming out, such as students saying, students from Africa, knowledgeable, academically gifted, PhD students, but assumption they're undergraduate. So you go to the library and there's an assumption you're an undergraduate. Assumption that BME students are really only interested in writing about race issues. People talking to us about being worried about raising issues, not knowing how that was going to impact on them or be received. So this impact of attending an institution where BME people are the minority can contribute to a sense of academic and social isolation. So students talked about the fact that they were not, I mean, they knew that by coming to Edinburgh, that it was, they checked the city demographics. They knew it was a predominantly white city. But the theory and the reality, when it come and people actually come and actually have to live on a day-to-day basis, was different. And therefore, there was a pressure to integrate quickly, not to be who you are, to avoid feeling like the odd one out. Spaces where you're very conscious you're the only one in the group that's different. So a hyper-awareness of that and the emotional energy that that takes to actually get past that and then to study and to be. So students told us about these kinds of things. Experiencing barriers in accessing support services. Counselling would be an example of that, where a student talked about going to see a counsellor and then spending, in the counselling sessions, about 50 minutes. So they're very tight time-wise. And then spending the first 20 minutes explaining what a racial microaggression is and then the next half hour thinking, do I really want to come back to this? And they don't. So there is something here about actually having a counselling service that is fit for purpose for our diverse student population. And then I talked about the attainment and awarding gaps already. So thematic review threw up a lot of things. Statistically, I don't want to spend time too much on this. We do have a relatively okay level of UK domiciled BME students. We've deliberately gone for UK domiciled because international students often skew the picture because we do have a high number of international students. But we don't have as many UK domiciled. Though we're the highest in Scotland, in the Russell Group, we're actually much lower. Academic staff as well, we don't have enough diversity of UK BME staff. So our students talk about never potentially ever coming across a Black member of staff to teach you. But they do see a lot of cleaners and they do see a lot of people at lower levels, support services area. So stats, having that picture means that, for example, in our professional services group, only 2.9% UK BME, talking here about front of house, reception, people who work in clerical areas, often lower grades. Often these are appointed and recruited from travel-to-work area of Edinburgh. And our travel-to-work area, our population census-wise in the Edinburgh area is probably in 2020 now, 8% of BME population. So why are we not recruiting locally? Why, in fact, is our university not seen as a workplace of choice for local people? So we need to do something about that. So stats is really important. We also found that our UK domiciled BME students were proportionally achieving less first degrees and also they were less likely to complete their programme than their white counterparts. So that varied school to school, so it's not a uniformed picture. But we have to do something about this. What we also found was that because of racial literacy levels were so low that we actually had to spend time teaching or helping people to really grapple with concepts like race, racism, whiteness and decolonisation, microaggressions, allyship, all the words, in fact, that you yourself have mentioned this morning. And so we tried last semester, even with lockdown, to pull together resources. And so we now have student-facing resources and staff resources and it didn't, it took us quite a while and it doesn't come with no finances attached to it. So you do need to actually, we found actually using doctoral interns to be a good way of developing some of this work quickly. You get a lot from these doctoral interns. We found that we co-constructed quite a lot of this with our Black Minority Ethnic Students, so bringing their voices, as you talked about earlier, into, from the margins into the centre. We're also developing Race Ed. Race Ed is actually a network of, for academics, of people who teach about race or whose work have a tangential link to it, such as those who might look at migration issues or those who might look at the history of colonialism and slavery, people who might look at bilingualism. So anybody that's got a link to a kind of race-related area academically, teaching about it, researching about it, interdisciplinary, are now part of Race Ed. So these are all clickable and that's why I hope that you will share the PowerPoint. But certainly, if you just go into University of Edinburgh and type "race equality", then actually all these should start popping into your inbox. I was going to go through a lot about the concepts, but actually I don't think we have the time. But I do think it's important to mention, and as the Provost already said in his opening remarks, that the roots of it is about colonialism and imperialism and that therefore we do need to go back and understand that. It is not something that it's about one person not getting on with another. It's about the systemic structural thing. And actually, I found Angela Saini's book, The Return of Race Science, to be quite useful. I don't know if any of you know this book, but I haven't read it cover to cover, but I know that even by reading the prelude, the beginning part, the introduction and her first chapter in Deep Time, where she traces how scientific ideas have categorised people. And whilst we might say, of course, we don't do eugenics anymore in 2021, that's absurd. But actually, I think some of these ideas of how people are categorised, the, who, whose accents are valued, whose cultures, whose literature, whose music, whose science, whose health, whose medicine, these all come from that period and therefore it is important. Even Charles Darwin, one of Edinburgh's graduates, fell for it when he said "men were above women and white race above others". And that line is one that, you know, we see in some of the rhetoric around the globe at the moment in some parts of the world. And some of you will remember the book The Bell Curve in 1994, which was, that argued that African-Americans were less intelligent than white Americans. 1994, we're not talking about 17th, 18th century. And let's face it, there is still a perception that Asia, Africa, Caribbean are playing catch-up with the developed world or that they're dependent on us for scientific expertise and financial aid. So I do think that Angela Saini's book is one that I will recommend to you for those of you who don't know her work. I do also think that the white racial frame by Joe Fagan, who is a sociologist, and he talks about this overarching white worldview that systemic racism that you've already mentioned is something that we have to see as important and the understanding terms like whiteness in that. The reason I put this up is because I get a lot of comments from colleagues that say to me, "are you seriously suggesting, Rowena, that a white person or a white family living in poverty requiring benefits has got some kind of white privilege?" And no, we're not talking about individuals because of course that family does not have privilege. And it could be said that somebody like myself, who is of colour, but a professor, earning a salary that's good for my education, has got financial privilege. But frankly, if I was out on the street and nobody knew who I was and I was waiting for a bus, I'm just another, well, I'm not going to use the derogatory language that's associated with race. But that is the frame. I remember many years ago, a young person saying to me, it wasn't a young person, it was an Asian shopkeeper saying to me, "why is it that the young people in my street know that they can actually throw eggs at my shop window or call me names, but they don't seem to do that to my white neighbours, shopkeepers, fellow shopkeepers in the street? What is it that tells them that they can do that to me?" That is the racial frame that I'm talking about, that I think you're alluding to when you talk about the need for systemic racism to be challenged at a structural level. So very much on the same page with you on that. But trying to get that being discussed in the university has not been an easy job because not everybody will, of course, agree with us on that. Decolonisation is another one of these areas that will give you, will get pushed, pushed back on because people make an assumption it's about deleting knowledge or histories. And it's also about criticising somebody's current syllabus and curriculum as being wrong or inappropriate. So a colleague, for example, from medicine said, "so are you telling me that I can't talk about ethnicity in medicine anymore? You know, there are certain ethnic groups with certain genes that might be susceptible to certain types of illnesses. Are you telling me I can't do that?" No, you'd be highly irresponsible if you were in medicine if you didn't consider ethnicity. But you've got to consider it in the frame that we've talked about, in Saini's work about the context. And so if you are teaching, for example, about sleeping sickness and things in Africa, don't talk about it as though it's something new that's just arrived, as though people in the past never had sleeping sickness before and this is something we've just discovered. Because this has always happened, it's always been there, those flies have always been present. However, when colonialism came, what they did was they took people's lands for, I don't know, for mining, for rubber and the construction of roads. And so farmers who would traditionally maybe not use certain areas of land because they knew the set-se fly was predominant there, had no choice but to go and find another piece of land to farm on. And of course, then you get the epidemics occurring. So that kind of contextualising is important. So decolonising is not about removing things or deleting histories. It is about repositioning and re-centring. So helping people to make that connection or actually having a debate about that with them is really important. I'm not going to say much about microaggressions. Allyship, you talked about a lot. And allyships are a very interesting one, colleagues, because allyship was a big word that happened after George Floyd. People were desperate to have allyship with each other. But my colleagues in the States are saying to me, "this allyship is wearing thin now and that allyship thing seems to be dropping as time has moved on." Either people, because people are exasperated or as the Provost mentioned about the statue being pushed, pulled down, it's like, whoa, 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 hang on a minute, I was with you up till that point. I was with you on allyship, but now you're talking about pulling down statues, changing buildings, names? I don't know, I think that is just over the top. So allyship actually is a bit like that, what tolerance can be quite fluid and can come and go. But nevertheless, I think allyship is absolutely important and Gurnam Singh talks about And um Gurunam Singh talks about different forms of allyship. And again, I've put it on the PowerPoint, but if you type Gurunam Singh allyship, you'll get this box. And I thought it was a a useful one for us to look at in terms of from moving from awareness to allyship, which is effectively action. It's not just about being aware. So areas in our plan, um at the moment that we have, and you can see it's online at our university, covers a whole range of things from Covid and impact of different communities. Um I also would like to say that sometimes intent and impact are two different things. Um the intent was to help. Um so uh in one school, they wanted to, um they sent a note out to all our uh students of colour to say, you know, we thi- this is how we were supporting you during Covid, et cetera. And then they tagged on a bit of a line at the end, which just, I thought torpedoed their good intent. And they tagged on a line, this is the start of our cultural awareness um mission. And I'm like, oh, and of course, BME students are going, uh you either care about us in terms of Covid, don't hang it on your culturally relevant uh sensitive bit of it, just don't. Just stick on what it is, which is about care for the health and safety of students. So I think these are the kinds of nuances and we're not going to get it right all the time. But the more we do, the better we'll get at it. Promoting a university culture that um tackles uh or that actively tackles racism is another area that we've been looking at. And that's why I think the Provost's opening today, um appointing a VP for EDI, these are messages and signals at an institutional level that the institution is putting its money where its mouth is. And that's what's exactly what's happened in Edinburgh as well. Our uh principal, Peter Matheson, has led this from the front. He's opened, like you have, town hall meetings. He has met with EDI leads across the university. He's um opened up discussions at Senate and leaders' forums. And I think that is immensely important, that he leads from the front on this. Service improvement, I mentioned counselling, so there are other areas of service improvement, but that would be an area we would be looking at. Decolonizing the curriculum, tackling underrepresentation, et cetera, et cetera. Reparation and reparative justice is another area that we're looking at, because how has Edinburgh benefited from the slave trade? And what is Edinburgh doing about this? You know, Edinburgh is not a port. Uh Dublin, I think, is, I'm not sure, but um Edinburgh is not a port. And the past, in the past, when I've tried to raise these issues, they've said, oh, we're not like Glasgow or Liverpool or Portsmouth. We're not port, no. But like Dublin, we're exporters of knowledge. We're shapers and exporters of knowledge, and we have done it for centuries. So actually, there is work that we need to be doing. Having said that, we also have buildings named after people. And of course, some of these people were people who did have a point of view that white people were superior. So that has caused discomfort for our black students who said, you know, I find it really uncomfortable every day to go to lectures in the David Hume Building when I know what David Hume thinks or thought. Then, of course, there's the other counter response, which is, well, Hume was a man of his time. Um and so what are, we are doing in the Reparation Reparative Justice, what is working with our city, because the city of Edinburgh also has benefited from the tobacco trade and others, to to see how we approach the issue of statues, names, um what we do in terms of linking in with the communities that we have, who've not been the beneficiaries of the slave trade, but in fact, who have been the people who suffered as a result of it. So looking at how we work through that area. So there are ten action areas, but lots and lots of sub-action points in our plan. The observations then, um is this clear repeated senior leadership buy-in, support and endorsement. Some of it is also um taking steps forward that perhaps uh we would not have been so comfortable with. So at the moment, our executive has just given us permission to take forward the Harvard Measuring Discrimination Survey of, um so we're going to use that survey to gather views from our black minority ethnic staff. Uh we will be looking to anonymize as much as possible to enable honest observations and discussions. And so that required some money, but it also meant that we had to get senior approval to to make this happen. And that is happening, uh I hope, in the beginning of semester two. Um senior readers being prepared to talk about these issues with other senior leaders and to lead by example, like your Provost and like your VP are doing today. Um people who lead the initiative to have the seniority and institutional knowledge reach and networks. So again, I think having a VP level will do this, but and it's that knowledge and reach, because like with many issues, um because I've been in the university for a long time, I know that I can pick up the phone or email somebody and get a response, which a a a person coming in new may not be able to. Action has to be informed by black minority ethnic students and staff and informed allies. And as I've mentioned, the importance of data evidence-based and informed. I would suggest not compromising on terminology or language. Um so if you want to tackle racism, you must talk about anti-racism. Don't just talk about inclusion or diversity. Um by all means, use it, but um an inclusive curriculum may not, may shy away from certain protector characteristics because it's more uncomfortable. So uh trans issues would be another one that would be uncomfortable. Um possibly Islamophobia might be uncomfortable, but racism certainly will be uncomfortable. So you may find that, you know, the successes you've had with Ina Swan, you, which has been sounds absolutely fantastic. And in a way, I think we're behind you on that one. Um you may find that the traction you're getting on race may not be as um an easy route, because for some reason, that is threatening. Um I akin it to a house of cards and you are picking the card at the end. Pick that card and the whole house is going to come tumbling down. And that is going to be what's happening if we're serious about changing paradigms. Assist colleagues to understand terms, because I think if you don't have clarity, then you have a lot of ambiguity. And then before you know it, people interpret it for themselves. So we have a situation now where my job is to try and get all the leads from the different schools who are looking at decolonizing the curriculum, bring them to the same um virtual session and talk about what we mean by it. Now, for some people, it might just mean a curricular change of uh reading materials. For others, it might be a lot more fundamental than that, depending on whether you're teaching physics or whether you're teaching sociology. So I do think courses for courses, but people need to have some kind of baseline common understanding for the national of not national, but the 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 institutional vision to go forward. Be prepared for backlash, um and people going lukewarm. As I said again, I'm with you up till that point, but hey, this is too much. I'm not going to go down the decolonizing route or renaming buildings. This is just not on. This is PC gone mad. So that is going to happen. And it will happen from people who, who I would suggest to you might have social justice credentials as well. People who traditionally be championing a class analysis or class issues, but not understanding that these issues are intertwined. Because um while Fagan talked about um uh the the world overview, uh I'm trying to think about the person that wrote about how the Irish became white. Did you know that? Do you know that book? Um gosh, what's his name? Can't remember now. Anyway, what he talked about in the States was that uh working class people, unless they actually, white working class people, unless they actually tackled their potential privilege of being in the white group and the back that they can go in and out of that group as they, as situation depended. Unless you start doing that, there will never be solidarity amongst the working class. So this was the um Ignatius, that's right, Noel Ignatius. He wrote, and the book is called How the Irish Became White. Um making changes for race equality requires perseverance. So it's not trendy. It's not about just having empathy for now. Um our subcommittee that I chair at the moment was initially largely uh populated and formed by black minority ethnic students and staff with white action owners present. There were white action owners simply because most of our key leads in the university are white, so that's why the action owners are white. Um the action plans were identified and run through uh the black students and the staff, but also anti-racist allies and taken forward by these action owners. So in a way, the subcommittee became a group and is becoming a group where the action owners are accountable too. So it does re- redress some of those power imbalances. We have a very large student population who protest a lot. Um and I do think protest voices have their place because it keeps us on our toes. But I'm afraid the work is painstaking and it will not change overnight. And this does cause frustration for our students, because they actually expect some of these changes to be overnight, because they've waited a long time. So it's understandable. Our university executive sent out a message to all staff prioritizing five areas for this year, academic year. One is the counselling service, because that was the one that the students were really crying out for. And this is one that we are working on to try and get a black minority ethnic councillor on board. We're finding that to be difficult to do. So we may have to think about third-party services, but that's difficult, because third-party services may not support our international students on different timelines and time zones. So there's a lot of things. So what we've done is brought some of our students on board in those conversations, so that they can start telling other students, look, it's not as easy, they are trying, but it's taking time. Um ensuring our support, report and support mechanisms is a second priority. Our students talk about the fact that they have no confidence in our report and supporting mechanism. So we, I I do apologize for the dogs barking, but I think it's been day today, so there's a lot of activity outside. Um so the report and support mechanisms are not fit for purpose, and we need to do something about that. Decolonizing the curriculum, attainment and achievement, and the under-representation of staff. Um like yourself, we have a lot of support. We have support from our principal. We have very well-informed ideali, just like you have. We have proactive student and staff networks that have actually mushroomed as a result of summer. And unexpected allies, people who have actually contacted us and said, do you need um some uh endowment or do you need a scholarship fund set up in our, in a, in somebody's name? I can't obviously tell you who these are at the moment, because they're in discussion with us. But it's been a surprise that that has also come forward, you know, so it's not about resistance. Hurdles, time-consuming, um clodder, massively time-consuming. I'm finding, I wrote the plan in consultation with staff and colleagues and students. But telling, getting it implemented, it's just time-consuming. Because you might find people going, well, I can't be the only action owner on this, because so-and-so's department and so-and-so also needs to be. And I'm like, excuse me, I know there's three of you, but one of you needs to be the key action owner. So which one of you is it going to be? It's that kind of level we're at now. We're highly devolved, very difficult to get your finger on every pulse. And people resent top-down um discussions and suggestions. They would rather it was bottom-up and have an element of local relevance. Pandemic is causing a lot of financial pressures. So whilst we might have steamed ahead under a normal year, this is proving to be really difficult. Quite resistance by colleagues. Uh I already mentioned don't broaden it out to such an extent that race gets lost. Uh computer says no, there are some colleagues that are no, not going to, not going to address this, not going to deal with it. So there is that kind of mentality about. Uh I think in the interest of time, I am going to move on. And maybe this is the last slide. I think the issue of up from self to systems is important. It is about changing the system. And that's our job, for those of us who are staff in this town hall meeting, that's our job. Um how we change the systems that we're currently in for our students and also ourselves. Thank you. So sorry to have gone on. You're muted.
Ah, okay, good, I can now. Um thank you very much, Rowena. That's a, it's a fantastic talk, actually. It gives us a lot of pointers and trinity about where to go, um about how to use the energy that we see and how to to combat the um the the negativity that's also there. Um so I think it'll be absolutely invaluable um to us, really. And I suppose, um I'm just wondering whether any of our participants wants to ask you, as we have you here just for this hour, um want to ask um any questions um i- in general, but also specifically to to you. Um I think we have, we might have something there. And so we have one um from Eleanor who says, um I have a question regarding pedagogy. How do you support teaching staff, professors and TA for decolonial inclusive teaching? And that's one we will have a lot of interest in hearing the answer to, Rowena, if you, if you have an answer for that, as we're just embarking on these, these, um, th- this question.
I don't actually have an easy answer to that. I think that it depends on your subject area. It depends on whether your curriculum is um the 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 bit that you need to concentrate in or the the cultures in your lab spaces. It just depends. But I do think co-constructing and listening to what your students are saying to you would be one way to do it. Um i- in terms of, I think there's a lot on the internet, so it's again for you to go and look at it a little bit more. I know it's a lazy answer on my part, but um I do think it's difficult to actually say there is one way of doing it. I do think the decolonizing bit of not making a presumption that um what we are saying is therefore the only way to think about something and allowing students a range of um perspectives would be one way. Our students talk about the fact that they don't actually often get perspectives, but also, I mean, I gave you the example of the sleeping sickness uh would be one. Economics would be another, where it's often portrayed that certain countries are just economically bankrupt. And people sitting there might actually be from those countries and like, oh, okay. So our language is important. It's because, um it's a bit like you have to use ethnicity when you talk about med- medicine and say, if you're talking about sickle cell anemia, you have to say there is an ethnic dimension to this. And people are, oh, that's racist. But you then have to qualify very quickly. There's an ethnic dimension, but it is not, eh eh to say in a way that's not deficit and to say, I am therefore not saying that everybody who is uh of that ethnic group will have this, but you need to be aware as medical students that this is a facet of it. So I think that's, language is important, examples are important, but co-constructed.
Okay. Grace, thank you very much. Um Rowena, I have um a number of other questions coming in actually from Shaz. Um thank you for organizing the session and to the speakers for their informative presentations. I believe that it is as important to understand what racism is not as to understand what it is. I have grown up with white people asking where I'm from, but the question is not always racially motivated. Traditionally, we, the Irish are a curious nation. We share an island mentality, and in the past, our survival has relied on knowing um people's origins. That said, when I tell people that I'm Irish and they refuse to accept my answer and ask me where I'm really from, then the racism occurs. The reason I raise this example is I wonder if Rowena could comment on understanding what racism is not.
This is an interesting question, and I'm interested to know, but to to find out where Shaz is coming from in that, because I can read so many things into this. So I don't know if Shaz is white or black, or whether it's because she's black Irish, uh Irish of colour, that people say, no, where do you really come from? Um so, or whether um she's Irish in um in another country where she's asked that question, I'm assuming it's a she, so I'm I'm sorry if you're not a she. But um I I do think that I go back to this worldview of how our world has been constructed. And in our world, the way it's constructed is there are certain types of people, certain countries, certain values, certain music, certain traditions are rated higher and more superior than others. And in Scotland, um it wouldn't surprise you to know that the Irish, when they first came, were probably one of the first groups to have encountered racism. Uh but it's masked, because we don't know whether it's racism or whether it's Catholicism. And actually, it could be a combination of the two. So I do think racism can take, change shape over time as well and become cleverer and more nuanced. Um and I also think that um there are black people and people of colour who will tell you they don't believe in racism and they, they actually have never encountered racism. And I'm really delighted that they haven't encountered racism. Good for them. Be- because we're all internalizing the same kind of narrative, this worldview. It's, it's something that I grew up with. I grew up in Malaysia. And the books that I read, the 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 curriculum that I was taught is probably the same uh curriculum that somebody of my age in this town hall meeting was taught. So we both internalized the same thing. I grew up all my life thinking that white women were much prettier, but this is is the kind of thing I aspired to. It's taken a long while to unlearn that. And it's actually some things you don't unlearn. Uh you, you just learn to check yourself that they shouldn't be feeling these things. So I do think that um racism takes different shapes in different places. Uh there is racial prejudice all over the world and can happen to everybody, one to another, different cultures, different ethnic groups. Uh I can be racially prejudiced to somebody else, but racism as a structural concept, as a global concept, is very, very different. And it is not about just you and I. It is about the way the world and therefore institutions have been organized. And that comes from colonialism and imperialism.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um so I have a question from Thomas. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, so I have a question from Thomas Conway. If it comes to a choice, um, do you prioritise student recruitment over curriculum change? Which is to say, do you wait until you have diversity in the student body before enabling encounters with a diverse curriculum?
What a fantastic question from Thomas and I'm uh thankful to Thomas Conway for actually bringing this up. No, the answer is your curriculum has to change. Um, because regardless, you could not, you don't have to have a single student of colour in your entire year group. But your curriculum needs to change because your students are going to be tomorrow's global citizens, leaders, policymakers. Whatever, managers. So actually, we can't short-change our students by actually teaching them uh a curriculum that is one-sided. So um I would say your curriculum change is key. And it doesn't matter who's in your classroom.
Okay, thank you very much. And Jennifer Waters, um, how do you facilitate in, interaction between students and the Equality Division of Administration to provide insights on effective action?
By bringing student representation and voices to the table. That's it. I talked about co-construction curriculum. So we have a Race Ed, a twenty credit course for our undergraduate uh uh students. That has been, we spent a year working with ten students this year, so it's a bit like your Black Studies elective, I guess. We've spent a year, this year, working with ten or twenty students, co-constructing that curriculum with them. Fourth-year students, that's who we're working with at the moment. But that curriculum will be rolled out in twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, that credit course for UG one and UG year two, but it's been constructed by fourth years. And within that fourth year group, there are BME students as well as white students. And that is how we're going to take that forward. So I think you've got to bring them in to the centre. If, if I go to a se- um, uh to, to the counselling service to have a meeting, or if I go to my lead on report and support, I bring the student reps with me. I don't do this, I, I'm, I, if I'm going to be really, really harsh with my colleagues, then perhaps I will not bring a student rep with me. Because I might want to say something pretty upfront, which is professionally maybe a bit sensitive. But if I want to open up discussions, then I do make sure that all the voices are on this table together, so that there's none of he said, she said, or oh, she said that to me, or he said that to her. Um, I think inclusivity means we're all there, doing it together.
Um, I'm just checking the time. Yeah, we have a chan- chance to perhaps do that.
That's fine.
A few more, a few more of them. Um, Shaz has got back to say that she is, she identifies as a black Celt, um, four generation of Irish Dubliners.
Brilliant, brilliant, whi- which is what I was kind of reading in it. Thanks, Shaz, for the clarification.
Um, Drina Johnson um then asks, um, um, I'm interested in how the counselling service is addressing the types of scenario you mentioned.
Uh, well, they've done, first thing they've done is done some self-CPD for themselves. But what they did was looking at culturally sensitive counselling. And I'm like, hmm, okay, that's great. But can you actually also look very seriously at things like whiteness and racism every day? Racism, everyday microaggressions, because I think culturally sensitive allows us to again slide away. Because with them looking at the individual, and I know counselling is about the individual, but we're looking at things at individual level. A lot of these things are not at individual levels and not about how we get on. You and I and everybody in this town hall could get on rip-roaringly fine. But we would still be living in a situation of structural discrimination. So we need to look at structures, systems. And so getting counselling to think beyond the kind of one-to-one is possibly a challenge, but they, they, they agreed to do it. The other thing, of course, is looking at having a BAME councillor um being, being recruited, appointed. But again, you know, i- it's a hard one because um we're, we're not getting the people, which suggests that counselling needs to be thinking about far more proactive recruitment into that area from a range of communities. But also, um the kind of pushback I get would be, are you suggesting that BAME students only go to the BAME councillor? No, nobody's suggesting anything like this. It's about choice. So uh I'm not sure I'm answering the question, but it's men, it's nuanced, there are many different areas.
Thank you, thanks. Um, and we we'll, we'll do a few more because there's quite a number of them coming out here and, and if you've got another minute or two, um, I'll just, just um, I looked at a couple of them. So um, how we tackle microaggressions, this is from Phoebe.
I think for some people, it is about penny-dropping, um, Phoebe. Because some of our colleagues and some of us student as well, I mean, our black students, actually, I have to say, have told us very clearly. It's no point um you concentrating your efforts looking at including just BME students. Because actually, most of the microaggressions we're getting are from my peers and our peers are white. And some of the jokes and some of the put-downs, the where are you really from type stuff are coming from my white peers. So please, can you do the education of the majority of our students and not just about us? And I think that is really important. So when we look at our student resources, we actually target resources for majority group, not the minority groups as such. The other thing about microaggressions is, so, so I think for some people, like many people in the town hall today, if we give examples of what microaggressions look like, but for many people, it would be like, ah, that's what you mean, okay. I'm going to be a lot more clued up about this now. For others, um, and so that's one. The other is a space to share that, safe spaces to share that. So where can your students go? Whether it's trans students or BME students go, where they can safely share these. So that they don't have to explain it because it's emotionally exhausting to have to do it. Now, we didn't set this up and you can look for it, those of you who are on Facebook. It's called EDI, eh, as in Edinburgh, EDI BAME, B A M E F E S S, Eddie BAME Fest. It's a Facebook group started by black students where there is a huge amounts of examples of everyday microaggressions. I just tell my colleagues, go on Facebook, go read that and see what our students are telling us. And some of it might be unfair, um, because, you know, i- it just goes over the top. Because, yeah, that happened to me and me too, me too, me too, me too. But sometimes it is actually really painful to, you know. I, where students say things like, I went to student complaint to talk about racism that's happened to me. I, they were very sympathetic, very helpful. They asked me um to think about mediation as a route. Uh, no, this is not what the student wants, you know, especially if there's a power differential. Because if this happened from a lecturer to a student, uh, I'm sorry, mediation is not a route. Because the student is in a powerless position compared to the lecturer. So you get that insight. So that I thought was really helpful. So if you're on Facebook, do go in, it's an open forum, you can read it for yourself. So have a safe space for people, but also let pennies start dropping. Give people examples of what microaggressions mean.
Okay, great. Um, and um Finton asks, um in a professional school such as mine, um, he's head of school in, in, in Trinity. Um, the progression of such diversity is contingent on addressing structural racism within the professions and in society. This often hap- happens individual career prog- progress. So there is an onus on us to address this at college and at societal level too. How can this be best be addressed, in your opinion?
I, I'm assuming Finton is talking about how is it best addressed within the school?
Um, I, I guess, and, and parts of the college community as well, I think, um.
I think you're doing what you're doing, which is um already starting to set um actions in place. You're going to win some people fairly quickly because they're already on board. And you will shift some of the people in the middle ground, then you'll have a whole bunch of resistors. Uh, hopefully, things will just get very uncomfortable, some of these resistors, I have to say. Um, and they'll start rethinking for themselves. I think you'll also be surprised that some people, um uh, some of the people who resist do it for an intellectual reason. And if you can debate and win them over on that ground, they, they do shift position. But I think raising the issue, I was a head of school in education and sports. I was the dean of the education and sport in, in Edinburgh for seven years. And even as dean of that school, um, I could not make the changes I wanted to make wholly. Um, but what I did was I tackled the issues upfront. I raised it, I talked about it. Now that I'm away from that post, I'm actually doing it far more openly because I don't have to be so diplomatic anymore. Um, so Finton, all the best to you for taking it forward.
Yes, indeed. Um, and, um I think.
Ah, in a professional school, he's saying it needs to go beyond school and college, yes. So you need to work with stakeholders and their outside bodies using professional standards and, and trade unions, et cetera. Local authorities and depending on who you are, your health service, et cetera. So I do recognise that that is going to be harder for a professional school. Because your student on a practicum might actually be facing lots of different um providers or client or, uh, uh, or, or, um, staff. So to try and do all of that can be difficult. But what you've got to concentrate on is make sure that your student has got someone to come back to. If they face things out there that they know they can come back to someone, their personal tutor or whoever in the school, and they will be believed and they will be heard and they can talk it through with them. And if there's an overt form that's happening out there, then you've got to work out with your staff how you're going to deal with it. Because um for us in professional services areas or in, in practicums and things, these placements are like gold dust. So often you hear staff saying, well, we can't rock the boat in that school or that particular ward in, in, in the hospital. Because placements are like gold dust. Sometimes you're going to have to do that.
Yeah, yeah. Great, um, thank you. We don't have any time for any more questions. Um, I might suggest those, if you haven't had your questions answered, that you could send the question to me. And perhaps, Rowena, I could pass it on to you, if you wouldn't mind. I think there's only one or two of them there that we haven't dealt with. Um, so I think I'm going to close this part of the um session and open up now to talk about our experience within Trinity. Um, so we have some people here um that are going, going to let take the floor um now. Um, which we've invited from within our, our college community. They're going to speak about their experiences of studying and working in Trinity. Um, and after this, there will be another chance for discussion. Again, please send the questions and comments through the Q and A button um for all pan- panelists. I want to start with Procy, um, Procy Nam- Nambacha. And she holds a master in law from the University of Cambridge. And before starting her PhD in law, which focuses on African capital markets law and policy, before starting this in TCD, she was head of legal and compliance um of the um Uganda Securities Exchange and the East African Exchanges Association. She founded and runs the CCB Consultancy, a social venture which provides end-to-end application support for students that are seeking educational opportunities outside of Africa. So, Procy, do you want to take over and, um, and, and, and take the floor?
Um, thank you so much. Um, it's really a privilege to be allowed to be part of a prender. And so thank you to everyone who has put on this event. Um, I think I have had a very interesting experience since coming to Trinity. So I think really just from the start, I remember when I started to look at um where I wanted to do my PhD. I had been living in the UK and so I figured I've done the UK, maybe try living in a different country and then look at a university. And so I obviously went through this whole process of trying to figure out why I wanted to do my PhD. And then one of those days, uh, as I was uh narrowing down my options, I saw the Global Room uh website. And so I looked around and then I figured, okay, if there's a whole global room, then clearly Trinity must be possibly one of the diverse places. But I also figured it's Dublin, Dublin should be diverse as is. And so here I come to do my PhD and I think, um one of the first things that occurred to me was the lack of people that looked like me. And I think, um it, it shocked me, but more than anything, I think it's a, it's a, it makes you uncomfortable. You're very uncomfortable because you never feel like you actually belong to a place. Because there are very few people that look like you, dead after having been in Trinity. This is my third year in Trinity. I know the look I find on the streets when I meet another black student, maybe just walking around campus. We, we have that look. You look at each other and you both smell because there is that, you can't believe you just found another person that looks like you. So I think my, my, my experiences with Trinity haven't been more of direct racism. I think it's just been a lot of the discomfort of being in a place that is very white. And quite in terms of the student body, but also white in terms of the faculty. I, I think up to date, I have never seen a member of the teaching staff who is black. I may have missed it, but listing all the faculties, I have never seen a member of staff who is black. So again, sometimes I keep wondering, like, is it because there are no people who are black that can actually um teach in Trinity, like what exactly is happening? So there've been those instances as well, but I think the, for me, the, the issues in Trinity have been more of microaggression. People making comments that may be more ignorant, but actually end up being racist. So there's been a bit of that. I've had people comment about my hair. I've had people touch my hair without permission. They just did enough when their hands extend and they touch. Uh, I have had, I one time was outside a lecture room, um, waiting for the other lecturer to come outside who can conduct a seminar, standing there with my books and everything. And the student walked up and said, oh, someone has spilled milk there. Uh, do you know where the rugs and like the bucket is? And, and my head, I figured, why are you asking me? Do I look like the cleaner here? There are thousands of people in these corridors. Why are you asking me? So I think it, it's like Shaz said, and I was actually quite glad to see Shaz, Shaz on the forum today. But like Shaz said, it's not always out of racism. Sometimes it's ignorance, but then when you make further statements down the line, they can become racist. But I think just lastly, so I don't take much of, much time, the other thing I think for me and Professor Claude will know this, is after the uh, the death of Judge Floyd, I think those are poss- that has possibly been my hardest time in Trinity since I came here. Because you constantly get tired of feeling tired. Every time an incident like that happens, you go through maybe a week or two of not sleeping, of just feeling like this shouldn't be happening. And I think after a while you get frustrated, um, you don't feel like there's a lot of support for you. I also don't feel like people understand. Uh, sometimes people wonder why you, you're feeling depressed about an incident that has happened thousands of miles away from you, but then they forget that that could be you. So every time an incident like that happens, the first thought process that, that you go through is that could actually be me. And I mean, it's not far-fetched because I have been on the street and I've had uh, school kids shout at me to go back to where I came from. And I have a classic exam, answer for that, I always told them, make me. Because, I mean, what else am I supposed to tell you? So it is, it is a constantly feeling tired, constantly feeling like you're always in fight mode. Constantly feeling that you have to justify your existence, that you have to justify your decisions, that you shouldn't be too aggressive because then you're also the poster child for black people at the same time. So you can be aggressive, you can be very, y- y- you can't really assert yourself at the same time. Because you don't want that to be the image that comes out as black people. And maybe just one final thing, uh, in sort of my experiences, I think I'm actually really grateful that these forums are happening because this is really a good start and then, and although I said all the other things that have happened to me, at the same time, I'm really glad that this, an effort being made and people are trying to understand. But what I would like to request from this process is, is the inclusion of people who look like what you're trying to resolve. Because I think sometimes the problem is you have committees, you have partners, and then you fill them with people kind of related to my experiences. And so I get frustrated because I look at the idea and the idea is good, but now I'm on the entire panel, looks like me. So regardless of how much you studied something, experience is always going to be your best teacher. Until you've actually walked in my shoes, you will never understand how I feel about things. So just really my plea is, as we embark on trying to make things better, it is important that committees are also staffed with people who look like what you're trying to resolve. So, yes, thank you so much.
Thank you, Procy. That's, that's wonderful. And actually, I, I absolutely agree with your, your final point. Um, I think it's very important. But I'm going to move on um immediately and then we'll take questions at the end to Anne-Marie, um, Nikwilon. Um, Anne-Marie is a teacher from Navan. Um, both her parents are from the travelling community. And much of her childhood was strongly influenced by the cultures and traditions of the tra- travelling community. She entered um into Trinity through TAP and she graduated with a degree in occupational therapy and is now doing a masters in primary education. She's about to launch a travelling community resource to support teachers in learning more about the travelling community and to give them quick access to the vast talent that exists within the community which they can share in their classroom. So, forward to you now.
Thank you, thank you. And, you know, I, I signed up for this thinking it'd be easier than standing up in front of a hundred people, but I don't think public speaking ever gets easier. Yes, so thank you. And I'm delighted to be here today to talk to you and about um me and my experience uh with TAP and I suppose my journey now as a teacher. Um, so, uh, from the intro, yeah, I'm from County Meath. Um, my parents are from the travelling community and I think to kind of get a sense of um why I'm here today. Um, my parents are from the travelling community and I think to kind of get a sense of um why I'm here today, you kind of need to understand uh their journey through education. And my mother would have spent most of her childhood travelling around Ireland. And you know, Longford, Westmeath, and Dublin before she settled in in um in Navan. And I suppose because of that, she didn't actually, she never really got much of an education. She had primary level education. But at the time, it was more her, wh- what she would say to me is it wasn't about, um she wasn't put into school to learn. It was more about just getting your confirmation, your communion and confirmation, because that was Ireland at the time as well, you know. And so uh she, both of them didn't didn't have, they only, like I said, only had primary education. But um and and I say that because I just think the often experiences of your parents, their educational experience have such an impact on your life and 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 your journey through education. And uh so they, even though they didn't have much, they 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 really promoted they had a love of learning and reading. And and when I think back on my childhood, you know, I spent my, with my mom. She very much promoted learning books and the love of the Irish language. She put me in a Gael school because she just loved. And she never got that chance to learn Irish. So she was like, oh, my god, here, here's this Gael school. I want you to go in. And I was like a little celebrity when I was young because around the travelling community, you know, going up and speaking in in way and just it was it was lovely. And so uh it was kind of my experience um through education, it was co- was going kind of smoothly, I suppose. And I I would have said, when I think back to primary, when I look back at all my primary school reports, my teachers were so encouraging and accepting and embracing of my background. But they would say in every one of my reports that like, look, she's a fantastic student and doing really well considering and how little she's in school, because I actually wouldn't go into school unless I, I was a child and I'd be saying to my mom, you know, oh, I want to take today off that I don't want to go in. And they didn't know any better because they, that was their experience. So and that was the, that's where you could see that kind of their experience impacting mine because they kind of knew no better, really. And so when I went into secondary school then as well, um it was around junior cert that the kind of cultural differences really started to kind of emerge. And I, at the time, they were very much, um, you know, encouraging me to drop out of school and to get married quite young. And that's often what a lot of young people from the travelling community do. And I think only nine percent go on to do their leave and search and then one percent of travellers go on to do, go on to a third level education. So um and often it can be those cultural um factors can that can influence that. So um I just, I didn't want to, and I suppose my time in secondary school, I didn't, my head, I suppose, wasn't really in the the game of learning. It was in this battle of like, I want to go this way and they wanted to hold on to what they knew and their culture and their traditions. And um so that kind of time, I I certainly wasn't just important. It wasn't my priority at the time. And I suppose the reason I say that is because that's what got led me uh down the road into the Trinity Access Programme. Um, I I finished my leave and search, which was a huge thing because none of them in my family, all my brothers before me, they don't even done the junior cert. So um I was really kind of pushing it here with the leave and search. Um, and so it was the Trinity Access Programme. I found out about it. Um, after my leave and search, um and it's there to support, um you know, uh young people from all backgrounds um to take that step into a university and also support their families. And so I started the Trinity Access Programme in two thousand and thirteen, I think, twelve. It's it's so long ago now at this point. And I did a year with them and I went on to get my degree in occupational therapy. And I suppose, because a lot of you, um, Procy, you kind of touched on it as well, just with being in um T C D. I don't think I ever felt like I didn't belong. Like, I actually was someone who was just think I belong here. I deserve to be in Trinity College. I'm very proud to be in Trinity College. But I suppose there was a lot of discrimination in that, like, um when people would meet me, they would assume, like, they could never um imagine that you know, some of my traveller background was in Trinity. So how I spoke or um just, you know, because to people, I was just this white girl, you know, I had, I they, I was in Trinity College. They would never, they couldn't imagine that like, oh, so you're actually from a traveller background, you're from a working class background, you're from a council estate. So there was a lot of that. And and still to this day, there's that battle in trying to educate people to think and to just open their mind to the fact that and you know, there is so many uh people from uh working class backgrounds and and the travelling community that are in universities, that are our teachers, that are lawyers, are doctors. And so there was definitely discrimination in that way. And also the working, it's 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 funny, I felt I struggled a lot with my own background in them and like the travelling community kind of accepting that I was actually leaving that world and kind of exploring something new, you know, university. That was difficult. And I'm I um with, when I think of TAP and Trinity, I think of that support because often with degrees Trinity, when people go to college, it's just think you're going to college to get your qualifications to go out working. But for me, I was linked in with so many supports, counselling supports, and I really got that toolbox to just mind myself when I, when I left college. And so what else? Uh, I, so I left TAP and I I went to work in education. I and I went to New York for a year. I spent a summer in Mexico and then I went down to Cork and I was working with traveller students down there. And um my journey again with Trinity kind of started up again. I was very lucky to meet um Miriam uh Colin from the Toba Programme in Marina Institute of Education and they're an associate college at Trinity. And um she was, I, you know, had my degree, but I really wanted to be a teacher. And but going back to my leave and search, even though like I met her two years ago, I was twenty-eight and I I'd done my leaving search when I was seventeen, but for me to become a primary ste- teacher, I am needed to meet the minimum entry requirements, which I didn't have. So I just want to stress that again. Like that time when I was going through so much with my identity and culture, and I had came back again to kind of and create barriers for me in in becoming a primary school teacher and doing my masters. And so they were very good with the Toba Programme. It's a fantastic programme that so um supports people from the traveller background to become um teachers and to diversify the teaching profession and also to challenge the curriculum and bring that learning into the classroom as a traveller teacher to educate students about the culture. And so just with that as well, um next week, I am launching the Traveller Resource. And and that again is for teachers to bring the talents of the community into their lessons, to share the music, to share the research, share the storytelling of the community in their classroom. And I'm just excited about that. So yeah, that's me in a nutshell. I have probably waffled on a lot here. And and that's my story. And yeah. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Anne-Marie. It's really, it's really important for us to hear about um about the travelling community here in in Trinity and and to keep up the dialogue, um I I think. So thank you very much. I'm going to move on straight away to La San and then we'll take questions from all three of you, for for all three of you. And La San, uh sorry, I introduced you, um sorry, first. La San, he's working with um Connect and Research Centre in the Department of of Computer Science here in Trinity. He's an executive officer. He's a devoted Pan-Africanist and human rights global social justice campaigner with the field of expertise on migration, asylum and refugees. He's a board member of the European Network of People of African Descent. He's a founding member of the City of Sanctuary in Dublin. He's coordinated the campaign to end direct provision and has worked with human rights and anti-racism networks. He has a BA in international relations. La San, take the floor.
Thank you very much. Uh, it's a great pleasure to be here. Um. Where do I start? Um, a big thanks to the provost and Trinity and everyone who made this possible. And the speak, previous speakers. Uh, I'm delighted to see that Trinity is uh moving toward uh uh making things uh better than the way they are following the global uh social movements and so on. Uh, I'm entering now in my fifth year with Trinity and probably this is the first opportunity for me to, you know, discuss issues of equality, race and ethnicity. And um probably um uh in my, in terms of my experiences, uh it it was, I I can say it's mixed. Uh, starting with Trinity, I was finishing my studies in in Dublin City University when I got the opportunity to join uh Connect, uh which is part of the Department of Computer Science, like you said, uh, which is a Trinity, of course. And um I will say that um it will be like probably my first official job uh after many years, after a decade, uh living in Ireland. And um one of my past legacy is having to go through direct provision, which is the asylum system in Ireland. Um, a a real um unfair and unjust system in Ireland, um holding people back uh to make a decent life uh living in Ireland. So um I I was maybe over hundreds um job application uh after coming out of the direct provision and after my studies. Um, and that was a relief for me. And the experiences working in Trinity is 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 well shared. Some people have said it, being who you are and looking different than others. Uh, at first hands make you um different in other people minds. And when they look at you first, uh they don't expect you to be like them or to be having this role. And and I do experience in some services as an academic executive officer with this role, having to handle issues and deal with queries and trying to resolve uh problems or, you know, speaking on behalf of others, in particular, like uh I I deal with uh uh, you know, international students, staff, uh, you know, procurement issues and, you know, a lot of things, uh as I'm known as probably the man of everything in my departments, um having to deal with a lot of things at the same time. Someone, some departments at the beginning, I I I experienced some kind of a fairly bit rejected because when you go to, before even you start talking, they want to treat you like a student or even a different and and even and and my experiences, if even students are treated this way, without even even being allowed to explain or to talk or to present themselves, who they are, it is still unfair. But however, I have to say that it's been a great experience for me working in Trinity, in particular in my department. And the 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 feeling is great. I'm probably maybe the only African in 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 there, but uh the the you know, the relationship with everybody is 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 perfect, is thrown out well. Um, I I don't have much really to to say in that on the time of my experiences. I wish um uh, you know, many departments could be like this because even in terms of diversity, we're talking about diversity and inclusion. Uh, I see my department as one of the multi-cultural and diverse department where we have people from different backgrounds, from Europe to African Indians, like I'm I'm African. And I've seen um maybe last year, uh during our um um consultation, uh some students who are also African background and in P S Ds and so on. That's great. Um, the other times is that, um, you know, as Trinity is moving toward um making equality uh and diversity uh work, it's 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 important to remind uh everyone, uh like, uh you know, the provost said it, uh Professor Winner said it, we we are talking about what had happened to push institution and and this global movement. And this is not new. It's simply because uh George Floyd case was truly caught on camera and that had touched people. But many, many people have been killed before in the US and killed after George Floyd and nothing has happened. Therefore, we we need to be mindful that we cannot fix, talk about eh equalities uh without fixing the inequalities. And inequalities cannot be fixed without we understanding the root of inequalities and what we do to others. Having said that, it is important that we think that um colonization and slavery legacy is still on. It is an historical injustice that have been maintained through the structural system that you are talking about. The systemic racism had been there for centuries. How institution, corporates, companies and so on have been leveled is 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 a problematic. Um, I I I I'm sure that this is not a, we don't have enough time for me to go into my background. But there was a big shock like Procy said it, when I got to Ireland and what I've had to go through. And I never thought, even running away from problem, will, I will end up in 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 a limbo life and being my life being held back um for this so long, I wouldn't have been there doing that. Taking the risk and the challenges that I had to face. But I'm saying this because Africa um remain, you know, under poverty and impoverished, underdeveloped, exploited. And those who are victim of these issues of inequalities will not overcome it till all of you, institution, lecturers, professors, educators, touching the real problem we are facing or what the continent is facing. Because with all the natural resources and everything we have, we could have been having a better way out. If you look at the structural system here, we have a diasporal organisation tackling these issues, working with government bodies and institutions, who are lacking funding. They don't get the right support they need even to even address it. We're talking about issues of who we are. And again, among colleagues and staff and educator, cultural education remain issues. We need to make sure that in every aspect of college or institution life, there is a understanding of 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 ethnicity or minority eh 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 cultures. Like Anne-Marie explained about what she had to go through. Luckily, I I am in the same building with TAP and I see the great job they're doing. And and sometime when I come out and see the mixture of of people, it's really give me joy. But sometime you even cross the all university and you don't even see somebody like you. And even if you see one person, you feel like, oh, top, and say hello and then you 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 get on to to speak. And that's great, but we need to make sure that those we work with, those we are teaching, we have eh eh the cultural education to make sure that we don't treat, we will not be able to treat everybody equally when we don't understand them or don't know what our a- our action means. So therefore, it is uh important that um um uh this is addressed. And I welcome the the fact that um I'm I'm I was uh I was informed two days ago that Trinity had already uh for the first time hired maybe a black study assistant professor, which I know very well. And I hope that is gonna be a beginning of making sure that a student knows that uh African and people of African descent also have skills and have the ability eh to to do things right. So um I always say, in terms of racism and discrimination, we keep talking about them. But there are laws and policies in place that have never been enforced or looked into. In my thirteen, fourteen years' life in Ireland, I've been not only verbally but physically attacked in this country for many times. I have challenged that to the authority, to the guardians and so on. At the end of it, many of us don't even bother reporting racism or discrimination because sometime, not only the fear is there, but the refusal, like Professor Ro- Winner said, having the courage to feel uncomfortable and resolve an issue, remain problem in Ireland. The culture of disbelief with an The culture of disbelief within our society need to be addressed. Because someone like me, if I go to the police station to report an incident, I may become double victim of that incident. And often what happened is an incident reported by ethnic minorities are kept for for over twelve months. And struck out with no investigation. So it's not a good message to the purpose of the this incident because it's like sending them a message, you are right, keep doing it. I've seen recently the 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 growing nationalism and far-right movements and so on and even within. Um you know, local level within the community, eh you you see that and some student might experience the same thing. And they wouldn't come and talk to you because they don't feel comfortable. Uh after George Floyd incident, you will see on the social, speak of on 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 social media how young girls and boys. Student are now talking about their experience and what they have had to go through. That need to be addressed within institution so student can be feel comfortable, staff can feel really part of it. And some people s- speak about racism and how they feel. But I do also want to tell people that, look. There are two things people have to be aware of. Like a serial killer or a robber will always have close friendship or people they hang around with and never harm them. Never done anything wrong to them, but however, they will go and do something wrong to someone else. So it's not about how or who we are, it's about honestly. Uh how we feel about those people and how we treat those people uh that count. And we need to retain of how we treat eh eh other people. So um. Finally, to 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 um to end, I think uh uh. I welcome this uh approach from Trinity, it's a good start and I hope it's gonna um pick up from there. I might leave it there and then if there's any question, I will answer. Uh but lastly, um there's something I know even Professor Ruina used the term people of colors and so on. And we need to really be mindful of even some of the legacy that the term that we use that may. End up becoming a legacy like what the time of Negroes, the time of, because the term of all colors came back like maybe eighteen seventies, sixties. With the call of citizenship used by Lot Luda, Martin Luther Kings and on other um uh movement in 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 the US. But it's remain problematic in term of prejudices and stereotyping of us who we are. Thank you for the opportunity and I hope that this is a beginning of or 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 something positive for all of us and I appreciate.
Many thanks, LaSanne. Um that's 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 very, very good to hear your experiences. Um and very useful, I think, for us to to hear your your views as well. Um I'm going to open up the floor now to everybody. Um as far as I know, that if you want to actually speak rather than send a question, you can raise your hand. Um and we should be able to actually let you talk. Um otherwise, um you can send a question in to any of us in the Q and A. Um I'm just seeing now whether we have um, we have something from Shaz actually, who's got back to us. And a question for you, Procy, I think. Thanks for sharing your story. I want to echo what you've said about visibility. They say you can't be what you can't see, there's an element of truth in it. In the late nineteen nineties, I was working on Irish equality policy and the importance of visibility of minorities was extensively discussed. Twenty years later, we're still talking about it. As a nation, we've come a long way, we have much to be proud of, but our institutions, including Trinity, are not representative of the diversity of our stakeholders. I wonder if Procy would like to comment on what she thinks the priorities should be specifically on would have. On would have made a difference, what would have made a difference to her when she first came to Trinity? That's thank you very much, Shaz. That's a, that's a great question.
Um thanks, Shaz. I think that's very true. I think what would have made a difference, and I think I've shared some of these thoughts with Professor Clodagh. But what would actually have made a difference for me is. And I think something that people who are not of color will never realize is that you really can't interpret in a comment to where no one looks like you. So I think sometimes the statistics can be misleading. So for example, it's easy to say that. We may want to achieve maybe a percentage of students in the international community. So for example, Trinity may say. Want to achieve maybe thirty-five percent international community students in our student population. But then I am a big believer in the facts behind the figures. When I look at a figure, I want to see the facts behind those figures. So you could say we have thirty-five percent student population, thirty-five percent international student population. But what's the breakdown of that thirty-five percent? So I think even in the pursuit of goals, it is important to break down the goals. That what does the thirty-five percent look like? Is thirty-five percent made up of students from America and Asia and that's it? Okay, so even in the pursuit of goals, look, look very clearly at the statistics. It would have made a difference for me if I saw people who looked like me. It it could, it didn't matter if they looked like me and they were Irish. I just wanted to see someone who looks like me, someone who understands my my struggle, someone who. Who I can actually have a conversation with. For example, when the ju- when the um Judge Floyd protest happened. I looked on it as like, who can I talk to who understands the frustration I'm feeling, who understands where I'm coming from or where I'm where I'm very emotional about the situation? And there was no one because my entire faculty, at least for all the four years of PhD students. I'm the only black person in four years of a PhD. You can imagine that's about sixty-something research students. And I'm the only black person and the situation hasn't been different for a very long time. You can tell even from the excitement of people who see you and they're like, oh, you're here. They're also surprised to see you because they haven't seen anyone who looks like you on this PhD program and this faculty for so many years, possibly for four years. So again, it would also have made a difference if there were teachers who looked like me, okay? None of those look like me or support, sometimes we say, oh, these are the supports having the before students of color. But none of those people look like me, they don't understand my my issues either. You're sending me to counseling services, no one in counseling looks like me. Sending me to uh S to S, no one there looks like me, you're sending me to. Every place you're sending me to, you're sending me to people who at that moment I'm looking at in a different light because of what has happened. So it's like sending someone to quote-unquote your oppressor to talk about your oppression. So I think it's it's representation is as important. Um I think it's not just a matter of saying we are making a difference, but representation is important because. For people of color, they need to see people who look like them for them to actually belong because regardless of. The fact that I earned my place in Trinity, Trinity will never feel like a place I belong because I'm constantly having to justify my existence here to everyone. Because people are asking like, oh, how did you, how did you get here? And they're not asking from a bad place, to be honest, they're just curious. But then on the other hand, I feel like I'm constantly justifying uh why I'm here or how I got here or why I look like this in a university that is extremely white. I don't blame them, but I blame the feeling that I get from constantly having to answer that question. So yes, I think ultimately the university needs to carefully look at its composition, both at staff level. I mean, even though, even taking aside the issue of black people, because black people are not the only people of color, even Asian Latinos are all people of color. Why don't we have a large composition of those people as well, especially in the teaching faculty, because that is where it starts from? If you're recruiting us here, you need to first sort out the teaching faculty. If they're there, I mean, can we talk about what are their experiences as well? Because it's not only a student issue, it's also a teacher issue, it's also a lecturer issue. If they are lecturers of color. Have we approached them to talk about the experiences? What are they feeling? What, because those are people who are going to encourage their fellow uh people of color to apply for positions in Trinity. And if they are having bad experiences, they will not encourage anyone to apply there. So you just end up. In this cycle of going ground and run because you haven't resolved the problem. You have five lecturers of color, ask yourself, what are the, what are their feelings? They feel like they belong here, they be included, are they getting the right? Promotions, are they being paid the same thing? Is there a salary inequality? All those are things that we have to talk about. It's not just students, 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 you also need to handle. The aspect of lecturers of our support staff. You don't always want to start the whole university with people who look like one skin, one race, because then. The student body starts to think that black people only good for cleaning or this race is only good for that. So it's it's also the small unconscious biases that we don't think about, they actually do impact how students and staff look at people of color.
Great, thank you. And I'll pull up, thank you. Um um. And I think, I don't know that we, I'm just going to check, I don't think we've got extra. Has anybody got further questions or wants to raise a hand? If not, I'll 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 start to wrap up. Um, okay, that's probably it. So I'll I'll begin to wrap up. So I wanted to thank all our panelists. Um I'm delighted that we had such, and I think an important selection of people, which goes from the lived experience. Um right through to the Provost today, which I think is incredibly important that we have the institutional support for change. Um so um I think, hang on, sorry, just before, Phil Mullin. Um who is going to run the Black Studies um is asking to speak, so I'm going to just allow her to speak. Um.
Hi, Clodagh.
Hello, hello, Phil.
Can you, I don't know if you can see me.
I can't see you. I don't think anybody can see you all here.
Okay, okay. Um so I just wanted to take the opportunity before everybody goes to to introduce myself and. Also, just to comment very quickly on some of the stuff that's been said this morning. Um I was struck by Professor Ashad uh commenting on the the bell curve. And you know, to point out that this is not historical, that, you know, there was a. A lecture in Harvard earlier in twenty twenty this year where Murray actually continued to to put forward his argument of the bell curve. So we're still trapped, you know, in that sense of racializing groups. And, you know, marginalizing groups and and putting them into particular categories. And particularly of knowledge attainment. And and I'm I'm struck by Procy and. Sorry.
What's happened?
I'd be here.
Yeah, um, yeah, no, I'm struck by LaSanne and and Procy and that that concept of. How marginalized people continue to feel um in terms of being part of the the university community. Um I know I went to Trinity in the eighties and I think I've said it to you before. Last, when I was in Trinity, I was referred, I was I was referred to by one lecturer as Miss Brown all of the time. For some reason or other, he couldn't get past this notion that my name was Miss Brown. Which I thought was funny at the time. Um but now, when you kind of put it in terms of microaggressions and and what that means. You know, you you view it differently retrospectively. And also, I think I mentioned to you before where a senior lecturer asked me at the end of exams if I was going back to Bongo, Bongo land. And this was something that was so unexpected because I, I mean, I had received kind of racist kind of treatment. On the streets and I had kind of put it down to a particular type of person and I never expected to encounter us. In Trinity, which I thought was going to be a place of, you know, huge intellectual. Kind of fervor and that I would meet a different type of person who would have a different attitudes and so. To have encountered us in a an environment like Trinity was shocking to me, you know, um. And I don't think those microaggressions have really gone away within the university setting. And and I think that's what's coming across clearly. And it's not just the students, you know, students come in and whatever they've learned, they're bringing with them. And I think it's how the university challenges and and decolonizes that kind of thinking. Is is really important, in particularly for somebody like Procy. I mean, I've never seen Procy on campus either, you know, and it's it's interesting that between the nineteen eighties and now in twenty twenty. I mean, when I was in college, there was only, I think I was maybe one of two non-white faces in the arts block. And the fact that that hasn't changed very much, when I walk through the arts block, I'm still conscious that there's not a huge, you know, eh. Non-white kind of eh student body that that's representative there in in the arts block. Maybe that's something to do with arts and humanities, I don't know. And my daughter, who who's there, she also, she was mistaken for somebody's carer. When she was, she was in college. So I think these are interesting conundrums, you know, that are part of being in a community. Um and I think hopefully with the Black Studies course, that we'll be able to offer some new kind of. Knowledge and and end a kind of what I see as a an epistemic apartheid. You know, that helps to to decolonize the curriculum. So I just wanted to say, maybe people like Procy and LaSanne, that we need to, we need to meet so. And we need to put it out there that we are there and that, you know, there must be a way of connecting people. You know, and so that you don't go through three years or four years of feeling isolated. And so I just wanted to to say thanks, Clodagh, for all the work you're doing. And and I'm looking forward to getting started soon.
Great. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much, Phil. And with those words, I think we will probably wrap up. Um I just wanted to say about what will happen after this. Um I have listened very carefully and the Provost has been available and and here throughout. So we've heard the messages and we've heard what has been said, which I think is is really essential. Um so the steps that I would like to take is to set up a working group, which will in fact um have. Um lived experience on it, which I think is absolutely fundamental. Um and will actually have the support of the university um to bring forward changes and a kind of concrete. Actions um and a concrete action plan. I think that's where we need to go as a university. I'll be taking this to board um to 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 see whether we can can get this through board. Um and um so that will be one of, one of the outcomes, I suppose, of this. What we also want to see coming out of this is to drill down a little bit. We need to drill down. We don't know yet really what's going on in Trinity. Um these are, you know, we we have some voices here. Um but it's important as well to drill down into the data, um which is what Ruina has been speak speaking about. And this is the first chance that we have in Trinity, this chance to actually drill down into the data and to see what's going on precisely about these things like recruitment. And progression and promotions um and.
The one I wanted you to put up for me.
And. And and such like, so that's, you know, that's, that's, that's going to be an important part of things too, I think. So, I mean, those are some of the things that we'll do, we're we're continuing being as active as possible. What I think I would ask you all to do is that if you have ideas. Um if you have things that you want to share with us. Um we're very open um to those. We need to know what's going on. We want to know what you're doing. Um if you're putting on events and doing stuff, it's it's great to know what you're doing, but we also want to know when things aren't going right. Um and when we can kind of get get in and do something. Um um I'm I'm very active, as active as I can be in this, in this, in this field. Um I consider myself an ally. Um I want to be a better ally. Um and um and I'm and I'm and I'm there, I suppose, is would be my 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 answer on on that. And I know that there is, there is senior support for this as well. Great. Um with that, I think, I just thank my my speakers again for 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 coming today, for speaking so well. Um and um and to all of those of you who came today.